I'd like to call to order the Regional City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 13th, 2023. We'll have an indication by Chief David Bracken, pastor of Jerusalem Baptist Church, Spence, North Carolina.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you once again for this opportunity to come together, Lord, and Father, we thank you for all the good things you've allowed us to do and still inside of us to do in this community. And now, Lord, we ask that you continue to bring us closer together as we endeavor to do good work. And Father, we ask that you continue to watch over us, continue to keep us, continue to lead us, guide us, and direct us. These are all the blessings we ask in Jesus' name before His sake. Amen.
Could we all rise for the prayer?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have proclamations, a few of them tonight. Recognition of Rockingham Rage Basketball Team. The CSAA Division Two State Championship. Ship winners for home school. Is Jeff Kahler in the house?
Hey, I'm not in trouble, is it? We're not in high school anymore.
Jeff was never in any trouble in the house. That smile you see on his face is the smile I saw every time I was in the house.
I told y'all it was good. Come on, boys.
Come on up, Rage. How you doing? Yeah, it's good to be seen, Jeff. We have a certificate of recognition for the Rage. Whereas the Rockingham Rage, varsity basketball team, led by head coach Jeff Kahler and assistant coach Frankie Edwards, won the CSAA Division Two State Championship, beating Liberty Preparatory Christian 57 to 39, 57 to 39, in the championship game on February 25th, 2023. And whereas this reasonable base Rockingham Rage sports program, a member of the NCHAC Athletic Conference, was started in an effort to provide an opportunity for these home school students to play competitive high school basketball. And whereas this year's varsity players have triumphed through tragedy and adversity, never giving up on their dream to win a state championship, while exhibiting a can-do attitude that combined with outstanding athletic ability and endurance has brought pride and recognition to Reevesville and Rockingham County. Now therefore, I, Donald L. Gorham, on behalf of the Regional City Council, do hereby extend congratulations to Rockingham Rage varsity basketball team, coaching staff, parents, fans, wishing them future success in all their endeavors, both on and off the court. This is the 13th day of June 2023. Jeff, you got anything you want to say?
Oh, we had a great group of kids this year, a few fathers, and we got a couple more coming in traditionally late. We had a great group of kids this year. We, when he said endured tragedy, we lost an assistant coach in September to start the year who died unexpectedly, and then we lost a player who developed strep type A in his blood after having an appendicitis in the middle of the year who died unexpectedly. But through all of it, these boys persevered through, showing good Christian character, and I'm just proud to say I'm part, being able to be part of these young men's lives.
Coach Edwards, you like saying anything?
No.
I'm gonna do something I've never done. Anybody on the Rage you want to say anything about?
Travis, you always got something to say.
Not this time.
Well, Jeff, we're real proud of you.
Thank you, sir.
And we know you're not gonna be sold, but just one, you don't have to have...
Many more.
Many more.
Yes, sir.
And this smile that you see on Jeff's face, it was always there. I don't remember anything but...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get a picture, please.
Next on the agenda, we have recognition of Wendell Neville, a 30-year retiree of the regional police department, and who better to present you your proclamation than somebody that you worked with for many, many years?
Lieutenant Neville, you did, man, I'm telling you. Yeah, we are so happy today and so proud of what's taking place. You can officially now join the Old Men's Grumpy Club.
I don't think I might show me that anything. You're probably a happier person.
Yeah, that's true. That is true. But I, you know, the thing I want to say about you, I most remember about you, you have always have been a dependable person, and you know, no matter what we needed to do, we could call on you, you were there, you were always dependable, and thank you for that. It meant a lot, and I, through the years, I just really appreciated working with you, and you inspired a lot of the other officers coming along. So, damn, what an honor for me to stand here and present this to you.
Well, thank you. You told me a side of me a couple of times.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Tell me a better way to do it.
Oh, no, no, we were just a great team. But here we are today. Whereas Lieutenant Wendell Neville began his career in law enforcement with the Reevesville Police Department as a patrol officer on November the 7th, 1994, officially retiring from the department on February the 1st, 2023, with 30 years in the state retirement system. And whereas Lieutenant Neville has held a variety of positions with the Reevesville Police Department, including sergeant and lieutenant in the patrol division and a lieutenant in the detective division, among others. And whereas Lieutenant Neville was known for his sound judgment, diplomacy, when faced with difficult decisions, displaying initiative and knowledge on the job, and using his energy and enthusiasm to help and train young officers in the RPD family. And whereas, he always showed dedication and versatility in his work, and his ability to adapt to many changes over the years in the workplace. And whereas Lieutenant Neville has earned the right to spend his retirement years doing those pursuits that he loves, such as deep sea fishing, scuba diving, taking cruises, oh boy, that sounds good, okay, and watching the space shuttle launch into orbit. Now, therefore, standing in place of, honored to do it, is I, Donald L. Gorham, on behalf of the City of Reevesville Council, take great pleasure in recognizing and honoring Lieutenant Wendell Neville Jr. on the occasion of his retirement from the Reevesville Police Department, and thank him for the many years of service to the City of Reevesville and its citizens who have benefited because he put his badge, gun, and uniform to keep them safe. This is the 13th day of June 2023, and signed by our Honorable Mayor, Donald L. Gorham. Congratulations, man.
Thank you very much.
You deserve it, you so much deserve it, okay. Again, just enjoy, enjoy the cruise, the scuba diving, and all of that kind of thing, man, just enjoy, enjoy.
I just want to say thank y'all for that opportunity, and thank you for giving me a secure future, I really appreciate it. Reevesville's been great to work for, and the citizens really took care of me over the years.
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Wendell might not remember, but I had his, get his assistance over at the high school a couple of times while I was on that, and I always prided myself in being firm, frank, and fair, and every time that we worked together, you were very firm, you were very frank about what you would do, but you were fair.
I thank you.
I remember coming over to...
That means a whole lot.
Lawson Building, hoping your time would save, you helping me.
Yeah.
Thank y'all very much, I appreciate it.
Can we get this picture?
I might.
Yeah, all right.
Thank y'all. Thank you very much.
Next, we have recognition of Police Sergeant Jeremy Revis, act of heroism.
Who's a hero? A hero is a person who performs a courageous act regardless of the circumstances, and we have with us today Mr. Jeremy Revis, who performed this act without thinking of himself but of everyone else, and I'd like to congratulate you on receiving this award, the certification of recognition. Whereas, while heading into work on April 25th, 2023, Reevesville Police Sergeant Jeremy Revis encountered on US 158 an overturned vehicle on fire with the driver trapped inside, and two civilian bystanders trying to keep the windows out. And whereas Sergeant Revis immediately used a compact window punch device to break the windows of the vehicle and was then able to drag the driver to safety. And whereas Sergeant Revis immediately purchased this same device for himself and each member of his unit in case they were to find themselves or anyone else in such a situation in the future. Whereas Sergeant Revis showed great heroism by helping to save the life of this individual and demonstrated that our police officers are never truly off the clock, as they use their skills, training, and dedication to the community to fulfill their mission to keep people safe. Now therefore, on behalf of the Mayor, Donald Gorham, and the City Council of Reevesville, on behalf and others, we take, I take great pleasure in honoring and recognizing Sergeant Jeremy Revis, and would like to publicly express our gratitude and appreciation for his exemplary area and heroic actions on April 25th, this is the 13th day of June 2023. Thank you very much. Your wife would like to stand? Do you have something you'd like to say?
I would just say thank you, grateful for the award, take great pride working for the City of Reevesville, and work for Chief Gibson. You never know when the time calls, and my time was called to take care of the situation that happened.
We really appreciate that.
Ms. Revis, you didn't realize when you married him, you married a hero.
And speaking of that, if we could get your wife, family, come up, there's a picture of everyone.
R O P D.
When you need to turn your back.
Yes.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
All right, next on the agenda is the approval of the May 9th, 2023 regular meeting minutes, enclosure warrant. Do we have a motion? Someone?
Second.
In the discussion. All in favor, the meeting's been approved, raise your right hand. We have several public hearings. Consideration of a text amendment request to amend Article 5, Section 4, Table of Area Height Requirements to Reduce the Front Yard Setback Requirements for Single Units in the Residential 12 Zone District from 35 feet to 25 feet. Team 2023 - Day Show 6, Closure 2. Jason Hawley.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and City Manager, again. The city has been petitioned by Southbury Development LLC to amend Article 5, Section 4, Table of Area Yard Height Requirements to Reduce the Front Yard Setback Requirement for Single Units in the Residential 12, R12 Zone District, from 35 feet to 25 feet. Staff has evaluated the front yard setback requirement from other municipalities in the triad and found that the standard to be somewhere between 20 and 30 feet. 20 was the lowest we found, that was in Liston Salem, and then 30 feet being kind of on the high end, 30 to 35, around in there. Therefore, we found the proposed text amendment to be reasonable, as it's kind of sits right in the middle of the average, and there's a considerable need for new housing in Reevesville. The most recent shifts in the development community, they're looking for the lowest setback as possible. Obviously, they try to make that driveway as short as they can, get the house as close as they can, and plus, a lot of people don't really want a large front yard anymore. You're seeing houses being built as close to the road as possible, and that's a pre-1940 style of building houses. Previously, we used to build houses closer to the road, and then somewhere after World War II, we'd start building them further from the road, and now you're seeing it kind of go backwards where it used to be. So, planning staff recommended adoption of the proposed text amendment, and the planning board unanimously recommended the text amendment be approved. I'll answer any questions.
Anyone from the board have any questions? If not, we'll open the public hearing at 6:19. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for? Seeing none, is there anyone who'd like to speak against? Public hearing will close at 6:20. What's the wish of council?
Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we approve text amendment 2023-06.
We have a motion and a second. In the discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next, public hearing. Consideration of a conditional rezoning request for a vacant property located off of Sherwood Drive from Residential 20 and Highway Business to conditional zoning Residential 6, CZR-6, CZ2023-01, enclosure 3. Jason, back again.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and City Manager, again. Cable Enterprises LLC is petitioning to rezone a parcel located off of Sherwood Drive. This is Register of Deeds Office, Platte Book, page 94, page 89, Area 1, and the reason why I'm referencing the Platte Book is because they recently subdivided this property, so this is the site plan, specifically. So this portion right here was formerly a part of this parcel, so just about a month ago, they subdivided off of this area right here, so the tax number is pending, because it takes the tax office a few months to catch up to where we are now, and so right now, we're still laying all that, so that's why I reference the Platte Book, the page over here, and the applicant's petition to rezone from, it's a split zone property right now, it's Residential 20 and Highway Business, and the petition to rezone to conditional zoning Residential 6, CZR-6. And what that means, so a conditional zoning, it's been a while since we've done one of these, and things have changed since 160D was adopted by the state. So, conditional zoning allows the applicant or the developer to voluntarily restrict the use of the land, basically saying, I'm taking this list of permitted uses, you know, normally we say the projects are relevant, it's just everything in play. It could be, you know, if you rezone to this, everything that's allowed in that district is allowed. Conditional zoning is the opposite. The applicant is upfront saying, this is what we want to do, and this is what we want to limit as far as permitted uses on the land. For this application, they are limiting land use to single units, that's single-family homes only. So, R6, like a general use, R6 district would allow for all kinds of things, duplexes, apartments, et cetera, but this conditional zoning district would only allow for single-family homes because the applicant is voluntarily stricken that, excuse me. The parcel encompasses an area of 26.267 acres, and the applicant gets to choose, again, which allowed the uses they would like to have on the property, and this is a proposed layout. We went through the TRC, through the Technical Review Committee, with the city to kind of see if there was anything that jumped off the page to us as far as site design concerns, and this is what's come out. This is not the final plan as far as construction goes, this is just for the layout and the land use. So they have to show us how many units they're proposing, I believe it's 48, if I'm not mistaken, and they have to show us the maximum height that the houses will be, which I believe is 35 feet, and this just gives them permission for the zoning, not construction. So this is just all, what this is, we're rezoning it into a conditional zoning district for this, for houses, and this plan. If they have any amendments that are proposed for the plan, if it's minor, I'm authorized to approve that, if it's minor, if it's like, we're shaving off a couple of lots for whatever reason. But if they try to change land use, like they say, we want to go from houses to duplexes or apartments or something, that would have to come back before council, because that's a major change to the plan. So, no concerns with the other land uses, this is what's being proposed, and again, they would have to obtain the construction approvals required by law. The property, the proposed conditional zoning aligns with Bill Number 3 of the Reevesville Land Development Plan to expand housing, this includes expanding the housing stock and providing a variety of housing options that are attractive and affordable to people of all income levels. The property is located in Growth Management Area Number 3 of the Land Development Plan, which is primarily set aside for residential development. The proposed conditional zoning is in line with the surrounding land use. The zoning map amendment is consistent with the city's land development plan and is reasonable and in the public interest. The planning staff recommend the proposed rezoning application be approved, and the planning board unanimously recommended that the proposed conditional rezoning be approved. And one last thing, the statement of reasonableness and the statement of consistency in your packets is a little bit different, so there's an actual document that says statement of consistency and a statement of reasonableness. That was a requirement of 160D. I've talked with people at other cities and local governments on how they're complying with this requirement, and it's just something we need to do a little more detailed, so the suggested motions are a little bit different, and that just ties in that statement of reasonableness and statement of consistency into the motion, and they'll be reflected in the minutes. So that's just a minor change, but it's just to comply with the state statute. I'd like to answer any questions.
Jason, please, can you go over once again about the property that was removed from this? That was the property that was subdivided to remove from this portion?
Sure, this portion here was removed, but that was not in play here, it's just...
It's not in play, but they removed it, so there'll be no entrance from Freeway Drive?
There will be no entrance from Freeway Drive. No, that's an entirely separate parcel now. The proposed entrance, as you can see, is coming here off Sherwood.
Mr. Hardy, if that parcel had not been removed, would it be a possibility to have an in-road from Freeway Drive to this area?
D O T would have to approve a drive permit, there would be no guarantee that they would have access, D O T could always say no, but that would, yeah, would be something they would have to approve.
Okay, and the parcel that is vacant, and now, what is the parcel next to it? Is there a building there?
Here? There's a couple of buildings here, I can't remember which buildings are located exactly here.
Okay.
I apologize, I'll have to look that up, but I can find out for you.
Right.
Yeah, this portion is still there.
And this is approximately, what'd you say, 48 units?
Um, the plan right here.
Okay. 26 acres and 48 minutes. 48 units.
Yeah, 48.
I do not live on that street, but don't live far. That is a busy street, it is a very busy street, and it's high volume of traffic and lots of speed, sometimes, that's some...
And that's something we would account for in site plan, or be like, if we were reviewing construction plans, that's something like Polite Works would chime in, there's a necessity of something to be put here to account for the speed, but this is just being land use, we're primarily looking at the surrounding land use, because it's already zoned residential, they could put a neighborhood in now, you know, by right, basically, so it's not like we're introducing an incompatible land use, so therefore, traffic is, 48 homes, we're not really sure if the DOT requirement for a traffic study, so if we felt the need for that, we could always implement a traffic impact study.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
So they are voluntarily asking for us to rezonate to R6, right?
CZR-6.
CZR-6, but before anything happens, they could come back and ask for something else?
Theoretically, given that would obviously require the approval of council.
But they do have that opportunity to change, to come back and ask for something else?
Sure, they can always come back and ask, yeah. Any other questions?
No. The water zone has been taken care of for that area?
Excuse me?
Are there any water issues out there?
Water issues, as far as water quality? I'm not sure, I would have to... You mean the water shed or water, oh, yes. So this is in Charleston Creek Water Shed, so, and one of the reasons, from my understanding, that this helps them, these perennial streams right here, they have to buffer 50 feet off of those, that's the state requirements and the zoning ordinance, is to make sure that there's, is to control the quality of the runoff. Because it's already zoned residential, they could put a neighborhood in now, you know, by right, basically. So it's not like we're introducing a incompatible land use, so therefore, traffic is. With forty-eight homes, we're not really tripping the DOT requirement for a traffic study. So if we felt the need for that, we could always implement a traffic impact study.
Thank you, Mr. Harding.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
So they are voluntarily asking for us to rezon it to R six, right?
C Z R six.
C Z R six, but before anything happens, they could come back and ask for something else?
Theoretically, given that would obviously require the approval of council.
But they do have that opportunity to change, to come back and ask for something else?
Sure, they can always come back and ask, yeah. Any other questions?
No. The water zone has been taken care of for that area?
Excuse me?
Are there any water issues out there?
Water issues, as far as water quality? I'm not sure. You mean the watershed or water, yes. So this is in Charleston Creek watershed. So, and one of the reasons, from my understanding, that this helps them, these perennial streams right here, they have to buffer fifty feet off of those. That's the state requirements and the zoning ordinance. It's to make sure that there's, it's to control the quality of runoff, or control the runoff that goes into these perennial streams. So the R six designation gets them further away from smaller lot sizes. Because the R twenty lot sizes are much bigger, so that way they can fit more in, the same amount of units they want to, and they can also protect the streams.
Hey, just, Mr. Harding, looking over my report, the planning board unanimously voted for this. Okay, thank you.
If it helps you, any councilwoman or woman, when Carter Ridge was built, there were some concerns about traffic at that. Are you also, but there haven't been any, haven't been any problems?
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Public hearing will start at six-thirty. Is anyone who'd like to speak for? Name and address.
Hi, my name's Tim Shaw. We're at Hagan Engineering, and we're at three-eight-five-nine Battleground Avenue, Suite three hundred, Roseburg, North Carolina. Two seven four one zero. And I just wanted to come to stand, we're representing the applicant on this one, and just wanted to come up and kind of give a little overview on it. Main reason for the zoning request is purely because of this street, and that was discovered down the middle of the site. It was a discover during environmental delineation, and it takes up a lot of usable air in the site. So we're still proposing a very low-density use in the end of days, forty-eight units on twenty-seven acres, so fairly low density. It's just trying to achieve a smaller lot size to get that number of lots to make it a financially plausible project. And then, just to speak towards your formative concerns, during plan of view, it's brought up that we would have to attenuate storm events for this project, and that's why we're showing two proposed ons here. So that'll help slow runoff and prevent any downstream issues. If you have any questions, then we have to answer them.
Any questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Say anyone else who'd like to speak for? Anyone who'd like to speak against?
Hello, I'm Elise Luegers. I live Sherwood Drive at fourteen sixty-six. I have a two-year-old, and I would say the volume of traffic is already a concern on our street. We live directly beside the greenway, so we often walk to the greenway so that we can walk to the park. And just that short little bit is concerning for me, and the thought of, you know, forty, forty-eight units, that's probably around a hundred more extra cars possibly on our street on a regular basis is very concerning for me, just because we are out on that street pretty often. I think from my basic understanding of that, the twenty would have the larger lot, so it wouldn't be as many cars, as much traffic on the road. You know, selfishly, we like having the green space, but that's not really my main concern. The main concern is just the safety, because people do fly down the street, and there is a large volume already from apartments on the street, and then people do use it as kind of like a just a throughway as well, so that's my concern, and thank you for.
Mayor.
C L Y C. Last name is Luegers, L U E G E R S. L U E G E R S.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak against? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at six-thirty-four. Counselors, end of discussion.
I think it kind of gives us an opportunity to evaluate the traffic on Sherwood, not only for this development, but for if we have a traffic problem, speed, that maybe will make us take a closer look at whether we have to develop or not. That may be a need that we have.
There are two prepared motions on page two and enclosure three. One to approve and one to deny.
Mayor.
Yes.
Because of the need that I see with the growth of Reevesville in the next few years, we have got to have more housing. We are going to be behind the eight ball if we don't do something about it. So I make a motion to approve the proposed rezoning for the specified parcel to the requested zoning district based upon the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the council agenda package submitted during the rezoning presentation, and may be amended, incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes.
I would also like to second that motion based on the fact that Mr. Harding stated if a traffic study is needed and whatnot, and that can be implemented, and that we can take some steps in making the quality of life better, if it is necessary, so, and I second.
End of discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Next, we have consideration of an ordinance to extend corporate limits by voluntary annexation of parcel number one-four-eight-nine-two-two, located off of Freeway Drive, A twenty twenty-three dash one, enclosure four. Jason, hard.
Thank you again, Mayor, Councilman, and City Manager. Attached is a fully executed request by Richard R. Saunders III, Mida B. Hastings, and I apologize if I butchered your name, Ruben M. Sanders, Clara M. Saunders, and Michael and Erling Birch to voluntarily annex five-point-nine-four acres located off of Freeway Drive. This is a contiguous annexation, and staff finds the petition to be valid and recommends approval of the ordinance to extend the corporate limits after the required public hearing. Glad to answer any questions if anyone has one.
Any questions, Jason?
I do want to start.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a hard time understanding exactly where this is. Is it right behind Tractor Farm's spot?
Yes, it's, if you're driving past Tractor's plot on freeway and look to your left as soon as you pass it, it's that wooded area. That's right there.
Because I see signs up there now, so I assume that is it. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Any other question? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
The public hearing opens at six-thirty-eight. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for the voluntary annexation? Seeing none, is there anyone who'd like to speak against the voluntary annexation? Public hearing will close at six-thirty-nine. Counsel, what is your pleasure on the voluntary annexation?
Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the voluntary annexation request for parcel one-four-eight-nine-two-two, located off of Freeway Drive.
We have a motion and a second. End of discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next, we have consideration of an ordinance to extend corporate limits by voluntary annexation of portion of parcel number one-six-four-three-three-five-Z-one, located off of South Scale Street, A twenty-twenty-three dash oh-two, enclosure five. Jason, hard.
Thank you again, Mayor, Councilman, and City Manager. Attached is a fully executed request by Kent M. Vaughn, Joyce C. Vaughn, David M. Vaughn, and Xandra W. Vaughn to voluntarily annex thirteen-point-seventy, not nineteen-point-sixty-four, located off of South Scale Street. That number changed. They accidentally included a portion of acreage that was on another parcel, but they just had to subtract that out. So nothing has changed in the land. It's the same area. We just had to get that slight bit of paragraph deleted, basically. So this is a portion of Rockingham County Tax Parcel, one-six-four-three-three-five-Z-one. And this is a contiguous annexation, and staff finds the petition to be valid and recommends approval of the ordinance to extend the corporate limits after the required public hearing. Glad to answer any questions.
Now, this parcel has no road front of Drive?
It does, off of South Scale, so it's kind of L-shaped. So it fronts South Scale, and then it kind of goes back. It's actually right behind the other one that y'all just approved the annexation for. And then there's like a triangle-shaped area that is not annexed, but partially it is annexed, but not entirely.
Okay, on the map, it doesn't look like it even comes near South Scale, so I won't show it.
It does front it. I apologize if it doesn't look that way.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Jason. Public hearing opens at six-forty-one. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for the annexation? Seeing none, is there anyone who'd like to speak against? Public hearing will close at six-forty-two. Counsel, what is your pleasure on the annexation, voluntary annexation?
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we honor the request for the voluntary annexation and portion of parcel number one-six-four-three-three-five-Z-one.
We have a motion and a second. End of discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next public hearing. Consideration of a proposed operating budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four for the ABC Board, enclosure six. Kelly Hall, ABC Board member.
Good evening. I'm looking for my support. I don't feel that here. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. This is the advertised public hearing for the operating budget for our ABC Board for next year. I bring you greetings from our chairman, Clark Turner, who took the executive privilege and appointed me as the spokesman again for the third year in a row. But I'm going to go buy a lottery ticket after this, because this is the third year in a row that my friend James Bestman wasn't here when I was here. They can't give you a hard time. I'm a person. The operating budget is pretty much the same as y'all last year. Small incremental increases. We advertise it as required. It's been a strange year for us. I think you all have anxiously and interestingly followed us through this year as we struggled with the second store. But right now, it's small fault, and we do not have plans to dispose of that property. We take the original intentions and outlooks for that area were true and accurate and will take place at some point in time, so we're going to sit on the property for now and see what happens out there. That affects our budget this year in that we do have some additional debt service on that building with our revenue to take care of, but fortunately, fortunately, the system is in good financial shape. It's going to be an interesting audit for us this year. We did we did account for the store separately from the original store, so people have a pretty good picture of what that looked like, and will explain our decisions on that store. But for the upcoming year, the budget is pretty much the same as always. We projected minimal increases in sales. That's the one thing we don't have control over. We have struggled this year, as most employers have, and the city has, with keeping employees, signing employees and keeping them. That has been our biggest challenge, and that was our biggest challenge with the second store. But maybe the tide is turning a little bit on that. But anyway, our budget is primarily salaries and liquor sales and our revenue, our sales, and that's it. The budget is prepared, I think it's copied up and available. If there's any questions about Joey Lang, our general manager, I thought was going to be here tonight to answer those questions, because I probably can't. And Carolyn Demins, our other board member, had a contact tonight, definitely there. She sent her greetings and appreciation for the topics of the board. I'll try to answer questions, or I'll find an answer to them if they're covered, all right.
Anybody have any questions, Kelly?
All I can say is they left, they just left you out. They just put the bottle in your pour, and here you are.
I told you about overtime for this. They said comp time, that's all I get.
Well, Kelly, I guess they figure since you're former city manager,
Yes, sir.
you had it all under control.
I don't know about that. I still would shake my head.
Does anyone have any questions, Kelly? Public hearing opens at six-forty-five. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for? Anyone who'd like to speak against? Public hearing closes at six-forty-six.
Thank you all. Thank you for what you've considered.
We don't need a motion for this, do we? Next public hearing, consideration of a proposed operating budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four for the city of Reevesville, enclosure seven, summary of orders.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I'll just go over some brief budget highlights for our general operating budget for proposed fiscal year twenty, upcoming year twenty-three, twenty-four. The total city budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is thirty-three million, three-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. This is an increase of five-point-one-six percent from the current adopted fiscal year budget. Property taxes are recommended to stay at the current tax rate of zero-point-seven-three-nine cents per one-hundred dollars of assessed valuation. Water and sewer utility rates are recommended to stay at the current rate, and no rate increases proposed in this budget. A small fee increase in the city's fee schedule is recommended for advertising, the penthouse venue rental, and community development. A couple of the other highlights, personnel-wise, this budget proposes a three percent COLA for all full-time employees. Funds are also budgeted for the city's pay plan implementation for the all-other group. This budget also includes funds to begin a new three-year cycle of the first year, which covers the police department pay study. This will also include a compression study for this group. And then also, the city's health insurance increased six percent. Employees and retirees' only coverage is covered by the city again at one-hundred percent. This budget also includes one floating holiday. And then in addition to that, this budget also includes three new positions. Those positions include one new full-time lieutenant position for the police department. This position would be directly responsible for overseeing the city's student resource officers, SROs, and revitalizing our community watch program. This position would also oversee the lake warden and downtown officer positions. Also, one new full-time lab supervisor position for the water treatment plant is recommended in this budget. And the final position that's recommended is moving one, moving one part-time position to a full-time position in the penthouse. The other item of note is the proposed budget does not include any capital requests, as this was necessary in order to balance this proposed budget. So all capital expenditures have been removed, as well as capital projects. We're hoping we may be able to fund some of these capital outbreak requests with carryover funding this fall. And I would just like to say, I'd really like to thank Mayor, Coram, and City Council, and our management team, and all of city staff that have dedicated countless hours to put this proposed budget together. Everyone went above and beyond to make sure we're meeting the needs of the residents. of the residents in which we serve while providing services at a high level.
I'd like to say, manager, we're dento to what you just said. You guys have worked very hard to ensure that Reevesville is one of the best-sized cities in this state. And the purpose financially to handle the needs of citizens, and that's the most important. We've also taken care of our own. Anyone have any questions? Public hearing opens at six fifty. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for the proposed budget? Is there anyone who'd like to speak against the proposed budget? Public hearing will close at six fifty-one. No need to vote here, we vote next. Okay, consideration of the adoption of the budget ordinance for fiscal year 2023, 2024, and the resolution of understanding accompanying the budget adoption, enclosure eight. Some more.
Mayor Coram and council, thank you so much for the opportunity to present this. And I would be glad to address any other questions at this time.
Any questions? All right. Seeing none, it's time for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to have to make a motion if the budget will be included, stand.
Got a motion. And a second, in the discussion.
I'm sorry, I did not hear exactly what you said.
I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion if the budget included a stand ordinance.
Got a motion and a second, in the discussion. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Ordinance amendments. Consideration of amendment to chapter ten, section ten dash fifty-four of the City Code of Ordinances, and approval of the Emergency Water Conservation and Restriction Plan, Water Shortage Response Plan, enclosure nine, Josh Beck.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, city manager. Last month, as you recall, I brought forth this for a public hearing. Just to go over a couple of the changes that were proposed, which triggered that public hearing. As you will see in your packet, I gave you a chart to try to simplify the fee schedule and those proposed changes. That was the big change that we were wanting to make. Again, this particular section has not been updated by fifteen years. And then also some minor, what I would call minor tax amendments we wanted to change from the rightful review to the Rockingham now. And then also add some language in there that would also send out any sort of notifications through our program system. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. Need to blink or I'd receive any comments either for or against after the public hearing that we had here. It continued for another week to ten days, but we didn't receive any comments either for or. So with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions, Jason? We have a motion for the Water Shortage Response Plan, amendment.
Seven minutes, second.
Got a motion and a second, in the discussion. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Next, we have consideration of bids for wastewater treatment plant Edwards replacement project, including approval of tentative award. Enclosure ten, Josh Beck.
So a couple of things here. So on May eleventh, we successfully opened bids for the Edwards project. For you guys, for the audits, Edwards, what we refer to as the entrance area of the plant. So we were successful in receiving three bids on that particular project, which is always a plus. You can see there on your packet, I gave you the base bid of those. And that's what we're here recommending tonight. So Jay Crumley, as you can see, was seven hundred thousand dollars cheaper than the next closest and more local contractor, believe it or not. So we are recommending that you consider those bids. I also want to be clear, this is a little bit different than previous recommendations I brought forth. Due to funding for this particular project, we are going to go back to the state and request more funding. So this is a tentative award, assuming the state will provide that additional funding that's needed to support the project. So you can see in the recommendation there, we're recommending you award it and then also provide a little bit of contingency there, four percent, one hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. And then the final piece of this, the resolution will also give our city manager the authority to sign chain doors, small chain doors. Obviously, if it was a big, major issue or impact, we likely need additional funding to bring that forward too. But this is small change orders that would come out of that contingency balance of four percent. Be happy to answer any questions you have. I know we talked a lot about this in our previous meetings, but certainly answer any additional questions you may have come up with.
Mayor, Mr. Beck, can you remind us, you said they are a local company. Can you remind us of their location?
So the company that won is actually, they're opening an office in the Durham area, but they're actually, they're headquartered. We've done some additional research on them. They're actually out of, I live in Nashville, Tennessee. I know they're out of Tennessee. But they have recently won a project. The name of the project slips me, but they're recently awarded a project here in Eden. So they're interested in the area. So hopefully, we can invent a pricing that substantially less. Certainly, we couldn't find any reason not to award it to them through our research. But we had not heard of them prior to this.
One more. And with the state of our economy now, you feel the four percent contingency fund is enough?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion for the Edwards replacement project and the contingency of four percent for the low bid.
So the resolution.
Oh, yeah, and the resolution.
I'm sorry, I make a motion that we approve the Edwards headworks replacement project in consideration of this and resolution.
Okay. Second. We have a motion and a second, in the discussion. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Next, we have consideration of contracting with consultants for the Development Ordinance Rewrite and Unified Development Ordinance Composition, enclosure eleven, Jason Hall.
Thank you. One last time. Thank you, Mayor, council and city manager. Attached is a proposed contract agreement with Codewright Planners LLC to assist in the rewrite of the city's subdivision and zoning regulations and composition of a Unified Development Ordinance, or UDO, as you'll hear so many times. In April, staff released a request for proposals, an RFP, seeking proposals from consultants to assist with a proposed development ordinance rewrite. We received four completed proposals, which were scored by a committee composed of city staff who rated the proposals per established criteria, including but not limited to experience with similar projects in North Carolina, staff education, examples of completed projects, personnel experience, references and of course, cost of services. Codewright by far received the highest score of the four proposals rated by the committee. The proposed contract includes adoption of the new UDO by council in November of 2024 and submission of all deliverables to staff by December of 2024. The timeline is realistic and allows an adequate time period for a thorough review of the existing subdivision and zoning ordinances and composition of suggested revisions. Cost of the project is eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, which includes all deliverables, travel, graphics, et cetera. It should also be noted that Codewright will graciously provide staff with thirty hours of technical assistance post-project completion at no cost to the city. So if there's any assistance that we need after it's completed, they will help us with that for up to thirty hours for no cost at all. Codewright has also included an option for retainage after conclusion of the project to assist in maintenance of the UDO. This would be a great asset and value to the city as would ensure that our investment in the UDO would be maintained and we wouldn't fall behind again as we did over the last thirty years. Based off the aforementioned rating committee proposals scores, staff recommends Codewright planners be procured as the city's planning consultant to assist with the composition of a new development ordinance. We are asking council for approval to enact the proposed contract and I will gladly answer any questions you may have on this.
Anyone have any questions, Jason? All right, what's the council's favor?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we enact the proposed contract, the UDO composition.
Got a motion? And a second, in the discussion. Those in favor?
Thank you. If I may say one more thing, thank you so much for supporting us and investing in the UDO. It means so much. It's the most significant investment that's been made in planning and zoning in the history of the city. So thank you again so much.
I have one more. So this is going to take care of our last thirty years' mistakes, right? And they're going to help us stay on top of it or help our code development stay on top of it so we don't get in this position again.
I mean, they will design the new ordinance, however we ask them to within what the law allows, of course. But yes, anything that we would like to change with the ordinance to see in the rewrite, they will help us with.
But this would be our tool to stay on top of it from now on.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I think it's more of a tool to stay on top of it than to cover for any mistakes that we have. There are some budgetary items. Consideration of cleanup budget ordinance amendment for FY 2022 dash 2023, enclosure twelve. Chris Phillips, Assistant City Manager for Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for your attention to our upcoming budget that you just approved. It started on next fiscal year. And this is one of the last things we ask you to do for this fiscal year. Over the course of a year, a lot of things happened that we don't know about this time of year, a year ago. And so some pieces of revenue will come in, different things, insurance proceeds, fishing license sales, donations. Police department just takes a federal program with about eighty-seven thousand dollars, gorilla dollars, and on the street they receive. We're able to go back to combating that same kind of crime. So a lot of things come in, but we don't come to you every month saying, we got a five hundred dollar contribution, we're going to put it in the budget. We wait and do it here at the end of the year. So all of those small things that, you know, are maybe insignificant to the budget in total, they add up and the department needs those amounts to talk. So when we add all those things up this year, it's actually four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars worth of items. So there's a revenue and then there's a corresponding expense. So we don't use any more fund balance for that. The attached budget amendment, you can see some of the amounts. Some of them are small, you know, a hundred and forty-one dollars. But there's some large amounts too. So that's a sort of routine to do that. They also, with this cleanup amendment, will pick up some things that maybe we know we're not going to be able to do at the end of the year without. They'll be a little bit larger than those items. And there are a few of those this year, I want to point those out to you. One of them is what Mr. Harden just presented, if you all graciously allowed us to do. We, that, we know that needed to be done. We knew it was going to be, it's going to be a large project and expensive project. Fortunately, we have funding this year. So we want to go ahead and recognize the funding so that we can go ahead and be starting that project. We don't have to delay until July. So what we're using for that is actually, there's fees that his department, that community development generated. You know, we have a very large project going on in Farmina in our industrial park. Expansion fees were more than expected in the normal year because it's such a large project and some other projects going on as well. So there's an extra hundred and five thousand dollars in fees generated by huge development that they're going to use to pay for the UDO. So they're basically paying for themselves. And if they recognize that, they'll be able to start. Likewise, you all know Pope Works has presented a CIP plan, capital improvement plan, that they have to do to help us plan over the next several years, decades. And really another tool that we can use to guide us through and to help with grant funding as well. We want to go ahead and get that project going and we had some sales of Circles property. We usually use our property pretty much until it's not worth anything. But when you save it up and sell it all, you get a little bit of money. So we want to recognize a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that we kept selling Circles property that can be used towards that CIP. So we knew that tonight and then Josh would have that money. And we bid out the projects we're expecting to get those back in and we'll have a fund in place with current revenue. And then there's two others. Again, no use of fund balance up to this point and none for this design as well. This next one, we've noticed with our fire department. You all know that this time last year, we were really worried about the future of our fire department because we had lost a lot of firemen. We had openings, we're having trouble filling. And it was unique for our fire department. We'd never been faced with that many openings at one time. Well, our chiefs had a good idea to have our own academy to train firefighters and people fill our vacancies, plus some other vacancies in the area through that academy. Very successful. But when we started this fiscal year, those trainees were coming on. They couldn't be on shift alone. They were still training. They're full shift now. But we started that this year with a lot of overtime. So our firemen had to work extra shifts while they were training these guys. And as a team, they get through that tough period. But just to finish up this year, we need to pull in some more dollars. And we've identified that sales tax is coming a lot higher than we do this time last year. So we're going to recognize a hundred thousand dollars of sales tax to go straight to the fire department to cover really overtime salaries is the biggest part of those operating expenses, the cost of what was going on. So we want to recognize that. Again, no fund balance. This last one is actually sewer reserves that we need to use. You all know we've had some consultation on our operations at our sewer plant. And we need to do some reserves to get budget. And we're expecting another, you know, we don't close out our June expenses until after the budget's done. We don't do budget until it's out on June thirtieth. So we're going to move five hundred thousand dollars of sewer reserves into contracted services to make sure we have enough to pay for all the consulting fees that we're going to look at this year. So that's kind of just a, you know, a quick run-through of what this is. The numbers are big, but you know, it's really a whole year's worth of cleanup for budget. So what you all want to consider is passing budget ordinance amendment number seventeen for the fiscal year. Should be the last one, unless something happens in the next week or so. Should be the last one, and then something happens in the next week or so.
Any questions? We have a motion for the cleanup amendment number seventeen, budget amendment.
I'll move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Consideration of request to suspend Saturday operational hours at city's transfer station. Enclosure thirteen, Josh Becker. Public Works director.
Good evening again. A little bit of history here, so we closed the transfer station on Saturday when COVID began, three and a half years ago, if that's how long that's been, yeah? Hard to believe. But yeah, we have, since that time, we've only received one complaint of that facility not being open on a Saturday. The complaint was really driven to the fact that our signage says it still has Saturday operations. So as you can see in my memo there, we do have funding for that for a part-time position, so that person basically will stay at the site, and then we, in a rotation with our full-time solid waste guys, will carry the construction debris box back and forth to the landfill as needed. So it's a two-man operation on Saturdays. In the past, it's been seven to noon, so about half a day roughly. And again, we just haven't seen the demand, and so we're carrying obviously overtime for the full-time staff in our budget for that, and then the twelve thousand five hundred in part-time dollars there for that part-time position. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but again, we just don't see the need, and I'm seeing that we certainly don't have anyone in that part-time position, so if the desire is to continue those hours, we'd certainly need to try to recruit that person and then start that rotation. But again, we've got one complaint in three years and however many months, so a lot of money if you consider three years' worth of what we've saved for that. So I'll gladly answer any questions you have.
Any questions? We have a motion to suspend Saturday operational hours at the city's transfer station.
Certainly sounds like it's thing to do, so I make a motion to approve that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Consideration of tennis court repairs at J.C. Ballpark, enclosure fourteen, Mr. Abel Cloud, Assistant City Manager, Community Services.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Hate to come to you all at this late morning. I know everybody's been asked for money, so I'm going to humbly request a little more. As you all know, I know a few of you have called and gotten some complaints from people about tennis courts at J.C. Park. And so just a little brief history, in twenty nineteen, I think I've been here about a year, we really asked for grant funding from the United States Tennis Association to repair if you pull into J.C. Park and you get out of the car and you face the tennis court with the baseball field to your back, we repairs the ones that are on, what you're looking at on your left. And so, and I think those are in decent condition, but those are going to be ones that we're going to have to look at again in a couple of years. But the ones on your right are the ones that we're requesting those to be repaired. Now, the issue out there with a lot of things, and mainly the parking lot, you know, that's on an old landfill, and so a lot of that stuff sinks, it gets, you know, cracks in it, and so what we want to try to do to those four courts on the right, instead of kind of patching it, we're going to actually remove concrete, do things over, put as solid of a base as we can, and restripe everything. And so we have already filled out the grant information for USTA again, and so the way they do their grants, if you have two to three courts, they may, you can apply for grant funding between fifteen thousand dollars and twenty-five thousand dollars. If you have four to eight courts, which is what we have, it's twenty-five thousand to forty thousand, and I believe in twenty nineteen, we were able to get that minimum, which was twenty-five thousand. So we're hoping that we'll receive that again. From what I understand, if we go ahead and do the work, we will be refunded, reimbursed that whatever they give to us. So if you look at the memo that I just sent, our man of city manager, of the two bids we got for the repairs and the restripping, it's a total hundred and twelve thousand two hundred and forty dollars. And if we were to get twenty-five thousand, if we were to get twenty-five thousand, which is the bottom of that four to eight courts, it'll be eighty-seven thousand two hundred and forty dollars. If we go all the way up to forty, forty grand, it will be seventy-two thousand two hundred and forty. And again, that is if we receive a grant funding and anything in between that. But again, our courts are used a lot, and we don't want people to get injured while they're out there, and so we'd like to humbly ask if we can possibly find the funding to help us to get those courts repaired.
And Mayor and Council, if I may, I told Mr. Cloud I would, we would do this together. So I told him to present, I would try to talk about funding options. So a couple of funding options, if this is something city council would like to look at, we have two sources, and we could bring a budget amendment back to you at your July meeting. So the first option, of course, is to let us propose a budget amendment out of fund balance for the full hundred and twelve thousand two hundred and forty, and then as our assistant city manager, Mr. Cloud, stated, if we were to receive the grant, that would be minus that in the long run. That's option one to take from fund balance. Option two would be to make an amendment to our American Rescue Funds, and roughly right now, we have about three hundred thousand left in American Rescue Funds. So you do have that as a possible financial option to fund the tennis courts. So you've got two options. Again, we just wanted to bring this to your attention tonight, that they are in desperate need of repair, and we would like to get some traction on this, but just really looking for guidance tonight. If you are interested, then at our July meeting, we can bring you back an appropriate budget amendment based on where you would like to take that funds from.
Any questions?
I don't really have a question, but I've got a comment, Mayor. Mr. Cloud, thank you. It sounds like that if you're starting from scratch and you're laying that base down, then we're going to have longevity with this tennis courts, and especially, like you said, this was a landfill and sinking and everything, and when you ride by, it doesn't look that bad, but when you get out, there's toe holes there that you could sprain an ankle for those of us old people who can't walk too straight sometimes or whatever, but thank you. And I know this is very, very last minute, but I do appreciate council and staff taking a look at this.
Mr. Cloud, does the agency have to use tennis tables to use those courts?
Yeah, everybody still does, the terms that they use, these are rocket tires, yeah.
Also, people use it for training, several groups have come out and trained players.
And Mr. Cloud, isn't those tennis courts on the right, aren't they our oldest courts?
The oldest?
They're the oldest ones?
Ah, I think so.
I remember they were back there in the seventies where I played on them. That was the ones on the right. I'm sure they need some attention.
They're the ones.
That's why they're sinking.
I wasn't here, I was around. I was looking for you. I played on them, so.
And, I mean, I am always thrilled to see how many people are out there using J.C. Park, whether it's the ball fields, the tennis courts, or the pickleball. So I think that we owe it to our citizens to make sure that we take care of this.
So you just need a consensus as to what we, you know?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Council, if we could just get a consensus, if you would like us to report with this, to present to you at your July meeting, we would either present you a budget amendment from your fund balance or a budget amendment from American Rescue Funds.
Well, in the words of Mr. Cloud Jr., I humbly give you permission to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consideration of fire department request for purchase of a Sufen heavy-duty custom pump truck. Someone would, city manager?
Yes, Mayor and Council, thank you so much, and I appreciate our fire chief, David Bracken, our assistant fire chief, Josh here, Mr. Farmer as well, so thank you, and if I'm going to speak, please step up and correct me. During our budget process, one of the needs that had been identified even in last year's budget process was the need to look at a new fire truck, and as we're all aware, those are very pricey. So we were able to take this into consideration as we move forward with this budget that council just adopted tonight, but we took this request out of there because the total request at the time was nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand. And during some of our meetings with council and our work sessions, it was brought to our attention on an senior agenda packet under enclosure fifteen, that if the city were to go ahead and move forward with at least expressing an interest in signing the contract or committing to this, there is no funding due upfront. Funding would not be due until delivery of the fire truck, and right now, the fire truck is anywhere from three to four years away. So that gives the city ample time to secure that financing. So what we have before you tonight in your packet is the pricing schedule, and what we're looking for is if the city were to commit between June first and June thirtieth, make sure the number is still correct, it would be eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And in speaking with our assistant chief this morning, I believe that if we were to approve this before this coming Thursday, there could possibly be an additional, it's going to increase this Thursday, four thousand. So if this is an endeavor that city council would like to venture on, it would behoove us from a financial standpoint to go ahead and commit tonight, just making everyone aware that it would be at least three to four years before financing would be due. And again, that gives us and administration ample time to be able to secure that financing. And Chief, I'll maybe turn it over to you and Assistant Chief Farmer, anything you want to say about the vehicle and the need for it?
Certainly it's important to, I'll get out of memory, everybody, but certainly it's important to kind of stay on task with the replacement of apparatus because when you, the delay in delivering these vehicles and building them puts you further behind because if we, if you approve it tonight, three-year build time, at a minimum, three-year build time before you get it, and the vehicle that we're looking at replacing is already exceeding its fifteen-year useful life, which you try to keep them on longer than twenty-five years at any given time. So timing of this is everything. Unfortunately, the price of the apparatus has grown astronomically from last year to this year, that same truck was two hundred thousand dollars cheaper last year, but the price has continued to escalate. I think it's the fifteenth, they don't know how much, but something has already sent us a letter that said we're going to probably have a lot of pricing, we don't know how much. So that's why city manager brought it before your attention this evening, certainly be proven wise that if we're going to do it, to go ahead and sign the paperwork so we can save whatever we can save. Did I miss anything?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Council, wish you pleasure.
I don't think there's very many opportunities that you will ever have to strike that gavel and say forty thousand dollars. So I don't think that we need a discussion on it, but I make the motion that we approve it.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
And I'd like to make one comment, since we have three to four years to pay for this, I know Mr. Phelps will be thinking about that, and he will find us the money by the time it's time to write that check.
He's probably already got a hit in some way.
The city would have grown by then, so we should be appreciative.
Yeah, we should be appreciative. Any discussion? Got a motion and a second? Those in favor? Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is public comments. Is anyone who'd like to come before council tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to manager's report, June enclosure sixteen.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It is a little heavy of our report, so I'll try and move as swiftly as possible, but I would like to take this opportunity and ask this young lady to please stand. I would like to introduce you to Ms. Caitlin McKinney, and she is with us this summer. She is with Appalachian State, and she is finishing up her undergrad degree in political science, and she's getting ready to start pursuing her master's degree in public administration. So she's working with us this summer in community development, so please just welcome her, and we're so thankful to have her as part of our team this summer.
Well.
I'm so grateful for this opportunity too. Thank you all.
Every time that I come in during the day, I always check on Caitlin, I ask her if everything is okay.
Going good.
And she gives me the thumbs up.
Thank you. Couple other items into personnel. The city of Reedsville hosted our Employee Appreciation Event at Lake Reedsville on Saturday, May the twentieth. We had over a hundred employees attend, and that did not include their family. It was a pleasure to be able to meet and interact with so many of our teammates and their families. I'd like to give a special thank you to our Employee Appreciation Committee members, that's Cecilia Basinger, Jessica Kreider, Denise Toms, Elaine Ratcliffe, Jenny Williams, Lisa King, Ricky Higgins, and Sherrell Williams. And I'd also like to give a special thank you to all the employees at Lake Reedsville who worked the event, made sure the lake was in extra beautiful condition, they went above and beyond. I'd also like to thank Sergeant Carter for assisting us with the desserts on a last-minute request, so thank you for that. And then, of course, I'd like to thank our management team members and all the employees who volunteered along with our city council members to help with staffing, setup, and breakdown and cleanup of that event. Also at this event, the Employee of the Year for 2022 was announced, and it is with great pleasure that we announced Mr. Lindsey Tuttle, who has been with the city of Reedsville for over twenty-five years, and he serves as our Public Services Superintendent. We are so thankful for his leadership and expertise. They've been the driving force behind so many of the projects you saw completed with our streetscape and all-inclusive park because of Mr. Tuttle and his department. So if you see Mr. Tuttle around, please tell him congratulations. Also, I'm very excited about this, I wasn't here for this, but I'm excited to see where it goes. Battle of the Cup returns. The first event will be Thursday, July twentieth, and it will be a field day at J.C. Park, starting at two P.M. Battle of the Cup will be held every other month, and at the end of the year, at our Employee Appreciation Event, the champion team will be announced, so please come out and support city staff. We also had our first manager listening series on May the eighteenth. This was held at Public Works, and we had over seventy-five employees attend this event. The purpose of our listening series is for our teammates to have the opportunity to engage with myself and our assistant city managers on topics that relate to local government. This month's series that we did focused on the budget, so that was very helpful and insightful to be able to get some feedback from our employees. Our next session will be July twenty-fifth, and it will be at the Police Department, will be our host, and the topic for this listening series will be classification, compensation, and repression, and how that relates to local government. The next one is a little bit of sad news, but bittersweet as well, in that our fire chief, Mr. David Bracken, has announced his intentions to retire July first. Chief Bracken- Chief Bracken has been with the City of Reesville for thirty-five years. The City of Reesville will have a reception honoring Chief Bracken's dedication and years of service on Friday, June the thirtieth, from four P.M. to seven P.M. with welcome and remarks at six P.M., and this will be held at R-Care. Thank you so much, Chief, this will, I'm assuming, be your last City Council meeting. Thank you for your service. But with that, we are also excited to announce, the City of Reesville started the search for our next Fire Chief. We began this process in April, we received over twenty-one applicants for this position. We were able to narrow the applicants down to two candidates, and both candidates succeeded impressively through the formal interview process. And the process was made up of members of our management team, where we did an interactive exercise with the people who were interviewing, and then we had a formal interview with myself, our H.R. Director, and both our Assistant City Managers. And through that process, we are now happy to announce who will see Chief Bracken is our Assistant Fire Chief, Mr. Josh Farmer. We can give him our.
Stand up, Josh, so we can see.
And just a little bit about Josh, for those who don't know him, he's a native of Reesville, he's been a full-time member of the Reesville Fire Department since 2014. He also is a Reesville Ram, where he graduated, where he played football and baseball, and he has so many accomplishments. In June of 2017, Mr. Farmer was promoted to Administrative Fire Captain for the City of Reesville. Three years later, he was promoted to Assistant Fire Chief and Fire Marshal. And some of his background includes, he has Associate's Degree in Fire Protection Technology from Guilford Technical College, a Bachelor of Science degree in Business Administration with a concentration in Management from ECU, and he will earn his Master's Degree in Public Administration from the University of North Carolina at Wilmington this fall. So we look forward to working with you, Chief Farmer.
Thanks.
Also, under Personnel, our Emergency Paid Sick Leave for City Employees Related to COVID-19 is set to expire on June thirtieth of this year. We, and with Administration, suggest that it is time for the city to allow the Emergency Paid Sick Leave program to expire. We did have an attached memo, if you have any questions, please let me know. And then, just a couple of projects, and this will conclude my report. The Sesquas Centennial celebrations for the month of June started with our Bounce House at Portland Park, and then we also have our June seventeenth Market, at Market Square, Summer Concert Series with nineteen-fifties music from the band Envision. And then, on June eighteenth, it's Governor Reed House from two P.M. to five P.M. for tours, including tours of the Sesquas Centennial Room. So those are some events for the Sesquas Centennial calendar this month. Also, our Streetscape project is almost completed, I believe they finished up striping, so we are concluding that. And then, our All-Inclusive Park, we are winding that down, and we are still hoping for an official opening of June the twenty-ninth, and we'll have more details to come, but that is our target date. Also, wanted to give some updates on Pecan Road. Staff are making some final revisions to the plan this week, and we're sending the information to the surveyor to stake out. We are notifying eight-one-one to mark all existing utilities next week, and we plan to begin installation the week of June twelve, and we do estimate this project will take about six weeks. Splashpad, we have received contracts from serious construction, and I believe we did receive our final approval from the Health Department, so we are up and moving forward with this project. And then, the City of Reesville has partnered with the Chamber of Commerce, the County, RCC, and so many others to put together Learn to Place Your Bet on Reesville. We had our first event in May, we had roughly, probably close to seventy-five people attend, and we're so excited to have the second part of our series titled Why to Place Your Bet in Reesville this Thursday at Penrose Country Club from eleven-thirty to one-thirty. And I just really want to give a special thank you to our city staff here that have worked on that project, Miss Judy Yarborough, Chris Phillips, and Haywood Cloud, and then also the great partnership we have with Diane Sawyer's and her team at the Chamber. Also, would like to give a thank you to Jennifer Lester and Randy Hunt and Ruben Gonzalez with RCC and partnering with the small business to make this happen. And then, also, our guest for that series is Steve Scott with Tri-State Steel, and also Eden Combs with Really One. So we're really excited, and I appreciate everyone working to make this second series possible. And then, finally, my report, I would just like to note that our surplus property, so every year, the City Manager should report surplus property that's been sold by the end of this year. And so, for the fiscal year of twenty-two, twenty-three, the City of Reesville sold two-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and forty-seven cents in surplus property, and you will find a detailed list in your Agenda Packet. And Mayor and Council, that concludes my report, thank you.
Before we just Councilmember reports, it was difficult for me not to say anything about Ms. McKinney while I was sitting here, but I figured the manager was going to say something. It was also difficult for me not to say anything about Josh, who is here tonight as our Fire Chief, starting July one. Something else you need to know about Josh, Josh is also a sworn police officer. So if you're speeding, you might get a ticket from the fire chief. Mayor Brodeur.
Thank you, Mayor. I've only got a couple of things. On May sixteenth, I attended the YMC Board of Directors Meeting. On the May twentieth, I attended the City Employees Appreciation Day at Lake Reesville, which was well put together, well attended, and I'd like to thank everybody that was involved, our City Manager, city staff, and everybody did a tremendous job. On May twenty-second, I met with the Rockingham County Mayors and City Manager and Board Members out of R-Care. And also, on May twenty-fifth, I attended the two-on-two meetings with Mayor Gorham and City Manager Wood. That was it for me.
Councilwoman Daisy Lee.
Oh, thank you, I have a few. On May the ninth, I attended the RDC Community Development Meeting, and then another special City Council Meeting. On May sixteenth, I attended Destination Magazine Ribbon Cutting, and learned a lot about places in Rockingham County that we didn't even know existed, it was well done. And on May eighteenth, I was a participant in the Place Your Bet on Reesville, and it was well done by Chamber of Commerce Diane Sawyer and the City Manager, Summer Wood. Also, the twenty-fourth, Reesville Chamber Board Meeting, with special guest Amber Bullock. On May the twenty-fifth, I attended the City Hall Special Breathing, and I also had a luncheon with the owner of the Lucky Strike, who wanted to know more about Reesville, so we had an extensive discussion about opportunities for him and his family here in Reesville. On May thirty-first, I attended the Scat Bust Ribbon Cutting. On May the twentieth, I did attend the Employee Appreciation Event, and it was well done, and congratulations again to Mr. Lindsey Tuttle.
Councilwoman Scott.
Thank you, sir. On May the eleventh, I had the Kiwanis Club, that's every thirty, so I won't repeat that. The twelfth was the Reesville Night at the Grasshoppers. The thirteenth, the Roaring Twenties Party at the Penn House, which was wonderful, we had such a good time. The sixteenth, Destination Magazine Ribbon Cutting. The seventeenth, the Reesville Police Department Open House. The twentieth, Employee Appreciation Awards at Lake Reesville. Also, it was the opening night at the Reesville Lucky's. The twenty-third was the Power Sports Ribbon Cutting. The twenty-third also was the RDC Board Meeting. The twenty-fifth, I had a two-on-two meeting with the Mayor Gorham and City Manager Wood. The twenty-sixth, JT Yogurt Ribbon Cutting. And then, June second was Downtown Block Night. But I'd also like to make a comment about the Bob Buckley Report on Fox. That was absolutely wonderful, and everybody who participated in it did a great job, and I just want to commend the City of Reesville, Judy, Chris, and the City Manager, Summer Wood. It was just wonderful, and I think we will just, it's going to be unbelievable how much we will read from that report. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wall.
Thank you, Mayor. It looks like I've attended about a dozen events, so I will not go over all of them, but I will tell you the highlights. On May thirteenth, I attended the Roaring Twenties Party at the Penn House. It was absolutely wonderful, great people, great history, great food, but the top of the list was Mayor Gorham actually had his dad's hat on. And for those of you who know me, I love history, I love things, and when he shared that with me, that was, that was one of the highlights of the day. And then, also spending time with Bob Carter. The next thing, which was absolutely wonderful, Chief Gibson was the open house for the Police Department on May seventeenth. Chief Gibson, you know, I'm going to always put you on the spot, I have never seen so many people, and I was only in the second group, so I don't know what, how many you had later that day, but it was absolutely awesome. And I took a friend, and she was so tickled to learn about blood spattering things and how you can tell, or something else, as she watches a lot of crime shows, so it was very informative, so thank you for the open house, and I know that was a lot of work, appreciate that. I also learned that afternoon that the Police Department got a new ice machine. That might not mean a lot to you guys, but sometimes it's just little things that make our life just a tad better, and you have a new ice machine, so I'm tickled over that. On May the twentieth, the City Employees Appreciation Day at Lake Reesville, wonderful, 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 I think everybody had a good time. The third was the Bounce House at Portland Park, that was a lot of fun, bathing suits, wet diapers. Again, the Police Department, Officer Langle, there was a fun run with the powder and everything, and I think a little bit got in Officer Langle's car. The next thing I knew, he had turned into a hippie, and his car looked like a ta-da vehicle. He did not, he did not care that the kids come and through, his vehicle was white, at the end of the day, it looked ta-da, and that was just his way of like, I can take it to the car wash, it's no big deal. I don't know if some of the rest of us would have done that or not, but it was a great, hot, humid day, and I appreciate the tents that everybody put up. The next thing is a personal note, that's one reason I didn't go over everything I did, but on May the twenty-fifth, John Burton celebrated his ninetieth birthday, and he was the pastor, longtime resident of Reesville, North Carolina, he was the pastor at Main Street United Methodist Church, and he's in a nursing home now. Tomorrow is the sixty-fifth wedding anniversary of Rivers and Mary Ann Upchurch. Rivers was a local dentist in town, and they have given that to the City of Reesville, the Soup Kitchen, the Outreach Center, and I'd just like a special note to wish them a happy sixty-five years. And then, last but not least, I heard that this coming Thursday, our clerk is taking a day off of work. I don't know why, she lives here, but apparently there's a big day coming up, so if you see her at work tomorrow, she won't be here on Thursday, but it's a big day for her, so happy birthday. And thank you for all you do, because you're the person who makes us look good, so thank you.
And on her last birthday, I sang Happy Birthday to her, and I'm going to do that tonight.
I was going to say.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Angelo. Happy birthday to you.
Oh, I'm going to cry.
Councilwoman Lara.
All right, I have a very short one. I also attended the May twentieth Employee Appreciation Day at Lake Reesville, and I saw the Dunkin' Boot out there, I didn't see anybody actually in it, but it brought back some memories, in which I used to volunteer for that, and so it did bring back some good memories. What I did was just play in the beanbag toss, and that was, that was fun, and the three sixter, that camera three sixty, it was just an exciting day, I really enjoyed. So thank you, everybody, for the work that you put into it. And I also attended the May twenty-second Reesville Minister Alliance Meeting at Design Baptist Multipurpose Center. And I attended the May twenty-third Human Relations Commissions Meeting, and I was very, very honored, and Mayor stays so busy, has so many things to do, I was honored to represent him at the Second Annual June tenth Commemoration Event at Market Square this past Saturday, and it was hosted by Four Seventy-seven, Beauty of Reesville, that was music, and games, and giveaways, and everybody just had a great time, boot trucks there, it was a very, very nice event, and they do a lot of things in the community, and again, I was just honored to be there. And that's my report.
I'm sure you've noticed that Councilman Festerman is not here, he had a family commitment, and he would always say that he's the best, so I'd be saving the best for last, so today I saved the best for last to let you know that he wasn't here today because of a family commitment. I attended the Beauty of Reesville Bingo Night, and I was there for about two hours, and I never won, so just, just for a little fun, I said bingo. But I did bingo. I was, on the fifth, thirteenth day, I attended the Roaring Twenties Lawn Party. We had the two-on-twos on the twenty-fifth, JT Yogurt, twenty-six, visited all of the, visited All Access Park, had an opportunity to see the wings placed on there. I started to help them, but I was afraid that I might mess up something, so I stayed away from that. So that's a beautiful airplane, if you haven't seen it, please go out there and look at it. On the thirty-first, I was at the Eggs and Issues at Wentworth. On the thirty-first, I was at the Scat Bust Ribbon Cutting. Six-one Chamber of Commerce Coffee at JT Yogurt, six-one Kiwanis Club Meeting, six-one Lucky's Baseball Game, six-two First Friday Downtown, six-three Portland Park Bounce House, six-six Monroe School Rewards Program, I was out there for my granddaughter's advancement. Six-eight Kiwanis Club, six-nine Attended Class of Nineteen Ninety-three Reunion. That was the first full year that I was Assistant Principal at Reesville High School, and it was a joy and a pleasure to be with those kids, they're not kids now, I told them that they were getting old, it'll be long before they'll be fifty. But I really did enjoy that, and it seemed like they were, they enjoyed having me there, so that really made me feel good. And last but not least, I attended the Installation Service for Pastor Hunt at Ambrose Church. Okay, next, we'll be moving to the first.
We need to hear Diane Sawyer's.
Sorry, Diane. I was on the road.
I was just going to enjoy the, the report.
Yeah, in the sun.
Uh huh. We've been angel long, she doesn't look right to you. I'll keep the breeze. Good evening. We are coming off of a long stretch of events and wrapping up with this Thursday, so we're really excited about the second part. I think Judy and I were just confirming we're at about the same amount as last time, looking at seventy to eighty folks on Thursday, so I think we're going to have a really good event, excited. We've got some, some new folks joining us, I was just sharing with the team this morning, Jersey Mice has joined the Chamber, and they're going to be open late August and planning the ribbon cutting, so I will update you all when I have that information. you all when I have that information. We don't have a ton of events. We've just got the, as you know, the first downtown Fridays. Really excited. I hope you all can make it to the Chamber, Ice Cream Social. Just a reminder, we don't do coffee in July, but we will have that on the thirteenth at four o'clock. Leadership Rockingham applications are out, and they are due by July fourteenth. And the program will begin in September. We are very excited to have that back, so if you know anyone that wants to participate. And then, we will be having our Reesville Day, I believe, I told you, beginning April of next year, so I hope to see all of you at some of that. And then, we have a concert series kicking off this weekend, so very excited to have the Beer Gardens and be back for that. The only ribbon cutting we have right now is yours at All-Inclusive Park, and we are looking forward to that. We do have several new members, Caroline Quickhair, Lindsey Elliott, the Reesville Reapers, which they are having their inaugural tournament on November the fourth. So we'll have more information. Grady's going to be sharing that. Chapel Construction and Coating, Jersey Mike's Subs, and Workout Anytime at Reesville. So very excited about all the things that are happening. A few of these are some of the regional and national chains that we've been talking about, and just continue to add, as we discussed this morning, to our anchor businesses that are already here, and our local folks that are doing so well. So, and congratulations to Jennifer Warren, who was our member of the March of the Chief. That's all I have. Thank you.
Like, you're doing a great job of getting the message out in the media about Reesville Summer Concert Series and whatnot, because I'm hearing it on the radio.
Oh, and that's Miss Judy right there. She's doing a great job.
That's great.
But we do love co-hosting those. Thank you for allowing us to partner.
The word is getting out, and so, and so people are really enjoying it. Kudos, great job.
Yeah, we've had a lot of foot traffic this week, where people are coming by, especially folks who are on social media and grabbing up the flyers that Robyn's brought us. So I think people are just excited to be out, and there've been a ton of comments about the streetscape and how beautiful everything is. So, and this little lady came in today, and she said, I just, I drive through, and it's like they're pulling up everything, and I'm like, oh, I missed it, she said, so I, I need to get the dates in time. So we were happy to share that with her. And I should say, the Luckies are playing their rescheduled game tonight, but that is going so well. Every game that I have been out there to, there's been a great crowd and a lot of fun stuff, and the kids are having a blast. So kudos to all of you for your support of that. It's been really great, so. And I know you're having a night out there, so.
Can I make a comment about that?
Sure.
The Luckies are, their attendance has been like between three and five hundred every, every game, and that's just wonderful.
Yeah, it's, it's amazing. Justin's doing a great job, and I'm very excited about everybody helping promote that.
Thank you, Diane. I'm sorry, I was. Brought something to my attention. There's a special day this weekend. Does everybody know what that special day is? Now, if it had been Mother's Day, everybody would have. Celebrate all the dads this weekend. Okay, we're going to be moving to the first floor conference room for a closed session to discuss real estate and a personnel issue pursuant to NCGS one-four-three dash three-one-eight point eleven, five, and six. And we will not be returning.
And I say this, this McCloud and to your group, your people doing a fantastic job in keeping the J.C. Park, the lawn, the trees, and same thing about ceiling. Everything is just, is so nice. Bill there is so attractive.
Thanks for the hard work.
Okay.
It's an apple, but if I was coordinated, everything you do.
But it's very, it's very nice, very nice.
Can we get a motion to go in the closed session?
Second.
Get a discussion. Seeing none, raise your right hand if you approve. All right.